Good morning, Anne Marie.
Good morning.
Anne Marie, do we have the presentation that's linked to? I guess we can download it from there. It's a little bit small on the screen.
All right, yeah, so you can download it from the agenda. Bringing Charlie in. Okay, so there's Charlie. And there's the mayor. Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, I should put in my earbuds. Uh oh, Ted, I think you need to go out and come back in. You sound like a chipmunk.
Not kind.
That's happened before, isn't that weird?
Where is he calling from?
His, his home office.
That should be good.
Yeah, it's sometimes, it, who knows, technology.
Hey, by the way, when we go back to having regular face-to-face meetings, I'll still be calling in via Zoom.
Okay. Up there's the mayor.
Anne Marie, Ted's an attendee.
Yeah, I just moved him.
There we go.
I just moved him over.
Great.
Oh, great, our, the, the repair people are here, can you take her? Our upstairs, oh goodness. Okay, so, we have, our upstairs heating unit isn't working. So they were here till after five, working on it yesterday, and it's still not working. What, what happened to the mayor? I, I don't know what happened to the mayor. So I did a test run with Bonnie earlier, so her internet seems to be fine, she may need to keep her video off.
Is that any better, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. I haven't had my chipmunk voice in a long time, since.
I know.
Maybe it's time to do Alvin and the Chipmunks.
Yeah.
Was it Janelle had the one that was super slow?
Yep.
Oh yeah, she sounded, she sounded like she had a very, very thick tongue.
All right, I'm.
Only one we're missing is Bonnie now.
Yeah, and I talked to her, literally, it was 8:30.
Okay.
When she and I.
Looks like she's gonna get a blizzard this weekend.
Oh boy, I did not, you know what, I did see that in the news last night, but.
We're gonna get rain all week, starting tomorrow, on Friday, and it looks like it's all gonna be snow up where she is.
Well, and she'll be up there, too.
Yep, definitely. So, well, she, that's why the mover wanted to move this week, so we wanted to get away from there before it snowed yet.
I guess that was smart.
Very smart.
Just keeping an eye for her and the attendees.
There she is, she's in the participants, the attendees file now. Morning, Bonnie. Looks like we lost Bonnie.
So she, she said that it wasn't working, so she was gonna try again.
Okay, good. We'll wait a couple more minutes.
I'm gonna stay on mute, because there's a repairman in my house, and the dogs will probably bark periodically.
She said she's, she just sent me a text, she says she's working on it. Oh, we're waiting, did everybody get the memos yesterday, or the two emails I sent yesterday, one had Bonnie's draft letter, and the other had the backup information from Tracy Garucci.
I received it.
I did, too.
And then Tim had shared some information that Stuart had shared with him in response to the meeting we had last month. So I think, though, that's basically all the information we have regarding this LNG initiative.
The, the draft letter was posted to the packet, so that's.
Yeah, okay, well, everybody got it, I sent it out again yesterday, so. Just by way of update, or just by way of information, this is slated to be voted on by, on December the 9th, by the governor and the other four members of the group that will make the decision on this, it's a simple majority vote. And I'm not aware what positions communities in New Jersey or Pennsylvania may have taken. I have not received any information about what might have been done by any of those communities. The resolutions, the draft resolutions that Tracy shared for New Jersey and Pennsylvania were very similar to the, the draft resolution they had sent to us for our consideration back in November.
Are we open this for discussion now, or are we waiting?
I just say, I'm just providing background information, Bonnie knows all this, there she is, hopefully she's joining. Yeah, she's connecting by audio, that looks hopeful.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, great, welcome.
Okay, I, I'm on my iPhone, but I'm, I don't want to use the audio, because I think I'll lose the link.
No problem.
Okay, sorry to be late, it took a little.
No problem, thank you very much for joining us, hope you're not snowed in yet.
No, but we're supposed to have, I think, four inches Thursday, tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, good, good practice with your snow shovel.
You bet. I got one.
I bet you do, and maybe snow shoes as well, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's 9:07, and we're here on Wednesday, December the 2nd, and we're here for a meeting of the mayor and city council, it's a regular meeting. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of possible action, I'm sending a letter to Governor Carney regarding transportation of liquid natural gas through the Delaware Bay. We have, we did discuss this at our meeting last month, and we had a presentation by Tracy Garucci concerning, Garucci concerning this possible project, and how it might possibly impact us, meaning the city of, city of Lewis. We also heard from Stuart Griffin at that meeting, and we have some backup information that's been provided by both of those individuals, as well as a letter that Bonnie was kind enough to draft for our consideration. As you recall, the surf riders had asked us to consider adopting a resolution which they had provided background information on, and I think Bonnie and I had had a discussion about that. And a lot of the resolution information was quite technical, and probably beyond our, our knowledge base. So Bonnie took on the, the task of drafting the letter, it is before you, you've had it, I'd like to open the floor for discussion, this clearly is a topic that is, not had a lot of press. There was an article in the Cape Gazette about a week ago about this, and I did do a little investigation of what goes on over on the Maryland coast, and the Maryland coast, in, on the Chesapeake, at Cove Point, that is serviced by a train line, and this in Gibstown is going to be serviced by trucking liquid natural gas, so it's quite a different procedure, but that doesn't relate to what we're here to talk about, it's just an interesting change that it would seem to me that the, the risk of, of transporting LNG by truck is, is considerable, and I don't know how New Jersey is dealing with that. But we're here to talk about how it might impact Lewis, and whether or not we want to send something for Governor Carney's consideration as he prepares to make the vote on this. So the floor is open for anybody who would like to comment, Bonnie, since you drafted the letter, do you want to comment first?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think what you said about, about what we can say in terms of what we know, I mean, none of us is River pilots, like Captain Cup and Captain Griffin, and none of us are environmentalists, so what I tried to do was look at this from the perspective of what, what can we knowledgeably represent? And express our concerns, because as you just outlined, Ted, there certainly are concerns about, about what's proposed here. So that's, that's basically what I did.
I'll comment, I just don't, I'm not in support of sending a letter, I don't think it's our frankly, I'm not gravely concerned, given the distance that the ships are off the coast of Lewis. I think that when you live in an area like Lewis, I think you have the benefits and the concerns that go along with it, the benefits of the beauty of being, living on a cape, but in the reality that you live at the mouth of the river, the Delaware River, means that there's going to be cargo going up and down that river, most of which we never even know what's going up and down. The other thing that I'd like to point out is, as a town, whilst this gas isn't direct to us, we have tacitly endorsed natural gas as a, a fuel that we want for, for our town to cook and heat our homes, so and the, the language around, you know, insisting the safety, those, those protocols, from what I understand, are in place through the US Coast Guard, so I think allowing this on our agenda has provided them the forum to raise this as an issue, but I'm not in support of sending a letter to the governor when it doesn't the terminal's not going to be in Lewis, so the trucks aren't coming to Lewis, the, the ships are passing through Lewis. And that happens all the time, as, as we've been made aware, and it's been happening for years, and it will continue to, because Lewis is a place where Riverboat pilots live. So that, that's my position on the action we should or shouldn't take on, in terms of sending a letter.
Can I, can I just pipe, pipe in about one quick thing? I think it was clear that this is natural gas for export, so while I agree that natural gas, it'd be nice if more people in Lewis had access to it. This, this is not facilitating domestic, domestic production, except to the extent that, you know, stuff is exported, which by definition, I assume, is, is surplus of what's needed domestically, is produced in the same way. The other thing is, I, I agree with Andrew, that ships go by all the time, and we don't know what's in them, but that kind of brings two concerns to mind, the first is that we just had a very destructive oil leak, so maybe we should know a little more about what's going on, since they have to take tons and tons of, of sand away, and the second thing is what I believe the proponents of a ban were trying to, to convince us of, is that liquefied LNG is far more hazardous than anything that is, that goes by us at the time, so just, just those observations.
Mayor, I might add a couple of thoughts, as I understood the materials, that the risk of catastrophe is where the loading facilities are, and where the truck routes are. But that, once it gets into the ship, it's no more dangerous, or much less dangerous than a lot of other hazardous cargo. It strikes me that this is not a, an issue that directly affects us, except in a very attenuated sense. It's not like an oil spill, when, I agree with Bonnie, an oil spill is, is disastrous for coastal communities. But the kind of disaster we're talking about here is not one that would directly impact us, and I think it might dilute our voice, the letter's very good, it's well-written, and it makes the point without overmaking it. But if we weigh in on every issue that has environmental consequences for somebody, I think we dilute our voice a little bit, so I'm inclined to agree with Andrew.
Yep, what is your thought?
I see both sides here. I have concerns, I have safety concerns about what this LNG represents as it sails past our coastline. But I have an appreciation also for the commerce that is conducted on the Delaware River, Delaware Bay, and I I, I would like to believe that there are systems in place within, not our local government, but possibly state government and federal government, certainly, that would assure us that there are safety precautions that are built into the, into this kind of commerce, so I, I guess where I come down on this right now is, is that I, I like the idea that we are expressing in this letter our overall concern, but we are, we are really looking to other people to make sure that our safety, our community's safety is not put at risk.
Okay. Andrew, you, I think you mentioned to me that you are a member of the Surf Riders, have the Surf Riders been talking to you about this concern, and all I know, I was, they reached out to me about it, that's how.
Well, I've not been directed, contacted directly regarding this. Surf Riders typically participate in like beach grass plantings, cleanups of the beach. You know, again, all those things are important, and to Rob's point, I think if there was an ongoing environmental issue with you're seeing more around the explosive nature of the gas, which is a hazard, but again, in the, in, in and of the way it affects Lewis, I, I think that's what we should be concerned with, and in my mind, it just doesn't raise to that level.
All right. So I, you know, is there, is there, I, I, I hear both sides of the story, and I do have, you know, if, the mouth of the Delaware Bay is what, 12 miles wide, according to this literature that we've provided. And of course, the, the sholling on the New Jersey side tends to put the shipping lanes closer to Lewis, so if there were to be some kind of an incident, we would be, we would more likely be impacted than St. Cape May. Because I think there, there tend to be more than eight miles off of Cape May, so there's that issue. There also is the issue of, in the past, oh, for many, many years, there hasn't been the Delaware River and Bay Pilots Association enjoys an excellent reputation of safely transferring oil. I've had the the advantage of going out and seeing that transfer point out in, it looks like a huge parking lot for tankers out in the middle of the bay, where they're transferring oil, and they do that on a daily basis. And been very, have an excellent track record of doing that safely as they offload larger tankers and onto barges so that oil can be transported up the river for processing by the various oil companies. So there is an excellent history on the part and on the part of the Delaware River and Bay Pilots Association. So I don't think this this letter of concern expresses any distrust or concern that that we feel that there's any error possibility or any concern that would be directed towards the operations of by the pilots. I think it, what Bonnie has captured here is just merely the concern about the volatility of the LNG. And should it somehow be allowed to escape a faulty valve or something like that, what would that represent to to the potential damage to this area? And so I think that's the the concern here. I did, I did have occasion to speak with Senator Lopez about this. And apparently, it has not been widely discussed by the legislature. So I don't, I, he was only marginally aware that this was, this was an issue that was coming up. So it's kind of interesting that there hasn't been a whole lot of concern expressed by the legislature about this. Similarly, I did speak with Rehoboth's mayor, and they had not been approached by this. So by the Surf Riders or the River Keepers. So I think it's, you know, if we have a concern, if we want to, even if we want to modify this letter in some way, just to say that we're aware that it's going on and we have, we're just concerned that that this represents something that could be a possible jeopardy, it wouldn't be bad to to at least let the governor know that we are aware of it and we are, we're alert to it and just provide that information. But if you all would rather.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry for interrupting, but aren't we doing that through the paper? I would assume that the fact that this has made it to our agenda makes him aware that we we know about this. The point I was making about the natural gas before, I preempted that by saying this isn't gas bound for for our area.
No.
The point I was making is that we have natural gas running right underneath of our streets. And the opportunity for accidents is more likely in that scenario than it is to have a vessel explode off of our shore and cause damage to our citizens.
Okay.
It happens more often that the explosions happen at a residential level. So I, 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 I'm finding the pleasure of what council wants to do with this letter, but I just think that we're, it's not something that we, I feel that we should be taking a position on.
Okay. Yeah, I understand your point about natural gas in in the Chesapeake providing us at this point, as there's quite a difference, as I think Bonnie was mentioning, in that this gas is bound for offshore. It is compressed, and so it's quite volatile. And but I do understand what you're saying. I have lived with natural gas being available in almost every area I've lived in, except Lewis, for for almost all of my life. So, you know. Bonnie, it looks like you're trying to say something.
Actually, I was just, all I did was move the phone, but thank you for the opportunity. Just to clarify, I don't, I don't think this letter, it's been a couple weeks since I worked on it, but I don't think this letter is intended to to say, don't do this. I think this letter is intended to say, this is a unique and critical hazard, particularly to the to the pilots, who I agree, have a wonderful reputation. But I think the idea here was to say, look, we've, we've never had this, this kind of a hazard presented to Lewis before. Please be aware of this and please, if it's appropriate, have this commission put into place protections that'll help everybody, including the people in New Jersey, who also are going to have this hazard. So I don't, I don't think this is a don't do it scenario. I think this is a please do it carefully scenario. But I understand what Andrew's saying about, you know, we put it on our agenda and and all that, but I don't, you know, I, I think we have, if we want our views to be heard, we have to be a little more aggressive about saying, hey, we're weighing in as a council on behalf of our citizens.
I'd like to raise one point, excuse me for jumping in here, but I do think that the one thing that the one component, and that is the safety issue, the safe, the potential threat, is a concern of mine. And with respect to, I just like to make sure that if there are any special, well, requirements or demands placed upon a volunteer fire department and other people who work in that kind of public safety area, I'd just like to make sure that our local people have been trained, have been well briefed on what is expected of them in this, if there was to be a catastrophic event. And I would also expect, I would expect some support from if, and I don't know if this is founded or not in logic, but it seems to me the Coast Guard would have a voice in that also, and a concern in that as well.
One of the things we could do to this letter is modify it to recognize to the governor that we're well aware of the safety record of the of the Delaware River and Bay Pilots Association. We commend them for their longstanding records, but this is a news, this is a new process that, you know, may require some additional attention. I don't know how that how that makes Andrew feel, or Rob, what your thoughts might be about doing something like that.
Well, Ted, I think the letter is already very good. I just don't, and I don't think, you know, modifying Bonnie's letter really meets the the concern I've got, which is that if we're going to comment on this, we ought to be commenting on the the nuclear plant, we ought to be commenting on the climate change, you know, because they, the effect on us is so very attenuated from the risks to the people who are adjacent to the truck routes and to the loading dock.
Okay.
So I just don't think it's something that we should feel that we need to to talk about.
All right. Bonnie, you have any further comment?
No, I mean, just for anybody who's who's listening to this, we, the council gets requests to take positions on things quite frequently. You know, sometimes they make it on to an agenda and sometimes they don't. So I get what Rob is saying about, you know, about not sort of losing, about not coming on everything. I will say that the distinction I see here is that this, this, well, yes, there are certainly people who are more endangered than we are. That doesn't make us not endangered. And this isn't such a question of general applicability, like overall climate change, that I would say, you know, there's no point in sort of commenting in the abstract. This is a a specific threat. So again, I mean, if the letter needs to be modified to make it clear that we're not not in opposition, but rather expressing concern, that's fine with me. But I do think this is significant enough that we should say, somebody should say to this commission, and it sounds like we're the ones who have been contacted since it comes closest to us, is to say, hey, this is okay with us, but please be aware of the specific harms and and concerns. And if if the commission puts in any kind of limitations on or safety protocols, maybe that would prompt them to look at those things carefully. So I guess that's, so I'm in favor of sending something, maybe not what was written, but something that just expresses concern about this hazard, which does go right by us.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on this? Is there a motion to do something about this letter or modify it, send it, or just not not consider any further action?
Well, since I just finished talking, I would move that we send a letter expressing the concern on behalf of the citizens of Lewis about this particular hazard, not opposing, but urging the commission to to look carefully at appropriate safety protocols for all concerned.
Is there a second? Thank you, Bonnie.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing.
Let me add that I plan to vote nay, but that's no reflection on the letter, which is excellent. I just don't think a letter at all is a good idea.
Okay. Right. All right. Is there any further discussion? I would just comment that I think the comment I made earlier about perhaps recognizing the the track record, the safety record of the of the Delaware River and Bay Pilots Association might be an appropriate sentence or two to add to this letter. Other than that, I I think the letter is, as Bonnie has said, expresses concern, but does does not say we're opposing it. And so I would be in favor of that. I don't know, Bonnie, how you feel about considering that as a friendly amendment or not.
That's fine.
Okay. Jim, would you agree? A second.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Okay, with that, with that amendment, let's call for the vote. All in favor?
I.
I.
All opposed? And I will vote in favor, so we'll make that modification and get the letter off to the governor. Thank you very much. I think it's been an interesting discussion. I think we all share the concern about the safety of our residents in the area. And I think communicating with the governor on this, given its proximity with which these ships will move close to Lewis, is not, does not weaken our position on other topics that we may choose to call to his attention. So thank you very much. Moving then on to new business, which is largely capital projects. And so Charlie, you want to talk to us about the sidewalk and street evaluation?
Sure.
This is going to be the Charlie show, I think.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Charlie, it's hard for me to see, so I'm going to be referring to the PDF at the same time. So please let me know when you're changing slides.
Bonnie, can you, can you see this, Bonnie?
I can.
Good. Okay, great. Okay, Charlie.
Okay, so we want to talk about, start out talking about the capital street projects and our street maintenance programming effort. And so what we've discovered, as we've moved through the whole process of obtaining the field information from Innovative Management Services and then preparing our spreadsheet analysis, which I'm going to show you later on, is that when we're talking about projects where we're doing a complete rehabilitation, renovation, restoration, you know, like what we're talking about doing in the Monroe Railroad Adams Corridor, a project like that falls outside the realm of the network analysis and the maintenance spreadsheet, which, you know, that totally makes sense because we have to rework sidewalks, we have to install curb and gutter in a lot of these locations. So everything's going to change. We're going to completely rebuild those roads and basically redefine those those corridors, those avenues to something new from what they are right now. So as far as I know, the one corridor that we've been talking about that fits into that category is the Monroe Railroad Adams category corridor. So I wanted to put this out there so that, you know, it's, it's, it's a project that I know that council is aware of from past presentations and past discussions, but put this out there, you know, so that it's one that you can consider moving forward for completion as, as, as the fiscal year approaches, either, you know, this year, next year, or whatever council decides. So we've been through this a few times, and I'm just showing the cost estimates for the city only. Obviously, we'll have to coordinate with the BPW, especially on Monroe Avenue with regard to some water sewer and stormwater. Also coordinate with Chesapeake Utilities and just get them in the loop on on putting in new meat or natural gas. But, you know, I've been through this a few times, so I don't want to belabor, belabor the projects, but, you know, Monroe Avenue is a complete rebuild with side, new sidewalks on both sides, curb and gutter, ADA ramp improvements at the Monroe Kings corridor or intersection. And it's basically just from King's Highway to Railroad Avenue, because we've already, the city's already completed Railroad Avenue through that intersection several years ago when we did Madison Avenue. Adams Avenue is basically just a.
Charlie, can I tap you on Monroe?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, is it okay to ask questions as we go?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay. What is the impetus behind the Monroe Avenue? Is it becoming a hazard to tires? Is it because BPW needs to upgrade their water and sewer and storm sewer?
No, it's, I think it's a combination of a couple of things. The road's in bad shape. It's probably one that needs to be addressed anyway sometime in the near future. But also, the idea is that this section of town with the museum, the new library, the bike trailhead has really become a destination point for the town, way more than it was, you know, 10 years ago. So we wanted to improve the pedestrian contact with with these new facilities in that corridor. And the same can be said for Railroad Avenue when I get get to that, that street, you know, Monroe Avenue, there's really no sidewalks at all in this section that we're talking about. The sidewalks on Railroad Avenue are strange and they're leftover from an older time period with a different design. It's not very pedestrian or ADA friendly at all.
Yeah. Well, tell me if, I mean, I'm not trying to speak for the BPW, but if they don't need anything, any work done, but they'd, they'd have to be involved if we did, are they, would they be willing to pitch in?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that 100%. I've mentioned these projects to the board in the past, and, you know, I think they're willing to definitely talk about making the improvements.
Okay.
They are, Rob, I can just, Darren and Press are aware of this. I think if you, particularly on Monroe Avenue, if you just do the section, the sidewalk comes up King's Highway and turns the corner, and then it dies. And then the same thing is true when we did, when we did Railroad Avenue up to, up to Monroe Avenue, we did all four corners of Railroad Avenue at Monroe with sidewalks that turn and go about five to 10 feet and die. So between the terminus of both of those, both ends at Railroad and King's Highway, there is, the only way to get connected, if you're a pedestrian, is to walk the street. And the street is very heavily alligator in front of the houses that face onto Monroe. And so that's what's driving this. So the board is aware of this discussion. And I, they, there's no, there hasn't been any comment made that I'm aware of that says that they wouldn't be participating in whatever upgrades they need to make. The water and sewer line in this area, I believe, has not. The water and sewer line in this area, I believe, has not been touched in a long time. Charlie, you, you have any record of it having been upgraded at all?
Oh, no, no, I don't have any record of it. So it's, it's at least 70 years old, both of them, probably, probably older for for the water.
And the water may well be, the water in this area may well be lead, for all we know, or galvanized.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we try to do on every street project is to investigate whether there are lead water services to homes and, and that's where the board gets pulled in a lot because they want to do that while the street's being rehabilitated.
Well, one more question on timing. If Monroe Avenue extended becomes an outlet for Schofield City or in Schofield County, the, the traffic on Monroe is likely to, going into the city is likely to become much heavier. Does that militate either way, Charlie, in terms of the timing of this project?
Well, what it did factor into is that you've noticed that I haven't included from Railroad Avenue to Freeman Highway because the developers got to make such substantial improvements to that intersection, as we're all aware, that I didn't want to even assume that there'll be any section of that particular segment of the road left to do. So that part of it is definitely factored into our discussion. As for the King's Highway to Railroad Avenue, the right of way is limited. So yes, it probably, you know, we will definitely have to consider what's going on coming from that new intersection at Freeman Highway. But the right of way width is limited, so you know, we're gonna be limited in what we can do if we want to put five-foot sidewalks, curb gutter and a road in there.
Thank you.
Rob, just, Rob, also just to, the, the section of Railroad, of Monroe Avenue was completely rebuilt when we did, when the trail was done to, and when the library and trailhead were built up past the intersection of the the street that comes out of the, the road that comes out of the library trailhead. So the only, the only section of railroad that, in that area that hasn't been rebuilt is from the, the the light, the exit off of the trailhead out to Freeman Highway. It's a very short section. And as
King's Highway.
Out to Freeman Highway. That's the only, from, from the, from the exit onto Monroe, from the trailhead to Freeman Highway is the only section that hasn't been rebuilt. So you, you, and that would, as Charlie mentioned, that would most likely be dealt with at the time of whatever is decided about the Schofield access is, you know, whether they're gonna signalize that or whatever they might do there.
Right. Are you saying that the, the section we're looking at has been rebuilt since more recently?
No, no.
I didn't think, but.
Yeah. When we did, when we did Madison Avenue back in 2014, 2015, we rebuilt, as the mayor mentioned, the whole railroad Monroe inner intersection with the sidewalks, ADA ramps. But we also extended over at, what was at the time, the railroad, rebuilt that railroad crossing and took it down slightly beyond the railroad. And then when the trailhead was put in, they took it beyond the entrance into the trailhead. So I think what the mayor was trying to say is from that entrance to the trailhead to Freeman Highway is such a short distance and the fact that so much major improvements need to be done if they're if and when they signalize that intersection, it's, it's likely gonna include that remaining section up to the trailhead entrance.
Right, okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks.
So moving on with Adams Avenue, it's just a repaving project. And so that's why the, the cost of it at 71,000 is relatively low. And we redid a lot of it several years ago. So there's only a small portion, relatively small portion of that road that would need to be repaved.
Can I ask a question about Coleman? Can we go back to that for just one second? I have not, not, I'm sorry. Monroe?
Yeah.
Just, just one thing not to lose in all of this, and I, I think Rob's questions raised the issue, which is if we're looking at having a lot of, a lot more traffic funneled down Monroe, then we need to think about where it's gonna go once it gets there. So, you know, is it gonna, is it gonna all go onto King's Highway? Are they gonna turn and go down to, what is that, Jefferson down there? Thank you. So we, I think we really need to look at this as, from a systems perspective because it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, good thoughts, definitely good thoughts. I don't think they're gonna turn towards Madison because I go down Madison just to see how the road's making out after we rebuilt it, but with the cars on either side, it's I feel like I'm sort of taking my life in my own hands every time I go down.
Awfully narrow.
So people yeah, people aren't gonna want to go that way, I think. I think, Bonnie, you're right, they're gonna want to come straight up Monroe and get to King's Highway. So it is that's, that's a really
Right, because that's a, that, you know, that's a, a difficult intersection already. And, you know, I, like everybody else, I've seen tons of people kind of squirt across, so I don't, yeah, as we look into this, I think we have to look into the whole picture.
Yep. Good thoughts. Which that might end up affecting this bottom line number a little bit if we do something different at that intersection.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the number's gonna go down. It never does.
No, it doesn't. Well, if anything, what we need to do there at the intersection of, of Monroe and King's Highway as it crosses over to BB is put in crosswalks across King's Highway there.
Oh, yeah, definitely. That, that is
I thought that was part of your
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was Charlie, I have a real quick question for you. How, can you, do you have any idea where the Chesapeake Utilities assets are presently located in relationship to Monroe?
Runs, runs right up Monroe.
Yeah.
Okay, so their main runs up, up Monroe.
That was, they were the first street served.
Okay.
Because they, that's how they got to BB. They came down Monroe and right across down BB Avenue to get to BB Hospital.
Okay, so the idea that there would be some kind of coordination with Chesapeake is probably there's probably not much need for coordination with them. Is that correct?
Well, we just need to know where, and we'll figure this out, where they're at now and, you know, whether they're serving any of those parcels on either side of the road.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder that as part of our Phase 24 project, which is now under construction, we are doing the ADA ramp work at Adams and King's Highway, which also includes ADA work at Manila Avenue. So that whole intersection in terms of pedestrian access and ADA access will be greatly improved by, you know, March 15th.
Great.
So another part of that, of this project puzzle is Railroad Avenue. Again, from, from Monroe to Adams. When we did Madison Avenue in 2014, 2015, we also did Railroad Avenue from Madison to Monroe. And as we talked about earlier, that whole intersection, that railroad in Monroe. So this is just from that intersection to Adams Avenue. It's a, it needs a complete rebuild. The sidewalk on the railroad tra, well, I still call it railroad, but the trail side is, if you've walked down that
It's terrible.
sidewalk, you'll notice, you know, it's just a little, little history back in 95, 96, I think it was, one of my first projects was on Mulberry Street. And we had the same problem at the driveways where the transition from the walking sidewalk through the driveway was very steep.
Yeah.
And, you know, nobody, nobody liked that. So what we did was we just lengthened and reduced the slope at the driveways, and we've been doing that ever since. And we certainly want to do that on, on that side of of Railroad Avenue, if and when this project moves forward. Just kind of smooth that all out, put new sidewalk and smooth those transitions, that driveway. We might want to consider widening the road because it's pretty thin and then there's sidewalk on the King's Highway side, but it's 12, 14 feet off the, off the edge of the road. And we're gonna be putting in curb on that side and gutter. So, I mean, that's just something that we'll look at when we get into the preliminary design part of it and decide whether we want to do it. We probably want to put new, well, we definitely want to put new sidewalk on the King's Highway side, which brings up some tree issues that there's existing trees that we'll have to look at. On this section, there's minimal amount of BPW utility work because there's an existing 16-inch water main would just tie over to the houses over to that new main or to that 16-inch main and replace any lead water services as we come across them.
Charlie, how are we, how is the stormwater? Do we have a stormwater problem in that area at all with drainage?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. We do have a catch basin system that collects it and takes it away.
And is it adequate for, is it functioning well?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know of any, you know, stormwater ponding issues or catch basins overflowing. It all, it all falls into the system that exits out Washington Avenue underneath the bike trail underneath Freeman Highway, weaving its way beyond White's Pond Meadows and eventually discharging into the canal up by the old Otis Smith Farm.
But with, with the curb and gutter, any, any issues of water getting to the catch basins should be improved, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And that's probably why we don't see a problem now because there is curb and gutter on the trail side.
Right.
And then on the King's Highway side, there's that large buffer of grass
Yep.
allows infiltration. So I'm not aware of any issues right now. I don't know if anybody else
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah. I'm not suggesting that there are problems. I just wanted to make sure it was addressed.
I think, I think the fact that there's no curb and gutter on the, on the King's Highway side allows any water that funnels off the crown of the road towards that, just to run into the, into the, into the curb space area to the lawn.
Right. I agree, Tim.
Charlie, for the middle two bullet points there, you basically have the language around consider, consideration. Does your estimate assume that you, we would move forward with the widening and the tree removal?
Yes, 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 it does.
And how, how wide is the right of way there?
I think it's 50 feet.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at the picture at the bottom of the drawing on Charlie's slide, you can see how there's a big gap between the sidewalk and where there, where there are trees and, and the edge of the road.
Right.
Thank you, Charlie. That's exactly where you were.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you can also see how at the corner, at the intersection of Monroe and Railroad, how the, the, when that repair, when that intersection was rebuilt, the sidewalks were stubbed in anticipation that they would be connected both up Railroad and towards the music, the history museum and down Monroe towards King's Highway.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, I, I don't have all the answers on this corridor project because, you know, we've just done like a preliminary analysis enough to put together capital project estimates. But we know a little bit about it and some of the concerns and things that we're gonna run into when we get into
One of the things to consider would be also to Tim's point about natural gas. There is not natural gas that I'm aware of between, on Railroad between Monroe and Adams. So we coordinate with Chesapeake and make sure that they reached out to those folks who live along that stretch.
Excellent. Okay. You know, Charlie, let me jump back and ask you, getting back to that stormwater management issue, running back to Monroe, in that section between Railroad and Kings on Monroe, there is quite a it's probably one of the largest hills in Lewis. It drops off, goes down to, as you approach Kings on Monroe from, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have at the, at that intersection of Kings and Monroe, is there satisfactory or adequate stormwater basins to collect the water that because there's gonna be a lot more water channeled on Monroe with curb and guttering there. Is it adequate there? Do we know?
It's adequate right now, but when we actually in, increase the analyzing of the storm runoff, you know, that'll definitely be something we
Okay, so, but that, that improvement would not be part of this estimate. Is that correct?
Um, no, it's not part of that estimate, no.
I think you have to remember that the hill that you're, or the rise that you're talking about, Tim, if you look at the, the building that has the white roof on, on Monroe, not that one, the one across the street, that one, Charlie, thank you. That, that's about where the, the crown of the road shifts water towards King's Highway. And then it starts to slope off towards Railroad.
That's correct.
So, there's gonna be, there's gonna be, you know, you've got a relatively short distance that's going towards King's Highway is what I'm saying.
I understand your point.
Okay.
I just did, I did not know how much grading work would be done on Monroe in this reconstruction.
Okay.
That's what I'm not aware of. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks for the, thanks for the comment.
Talking about, let's, let's think about this as a system. And as we get more traffic on Monroe coming into town, it's gonna want either to go to Savannah, maybe to the hospital, maybe the medical offices around there, maybe for other purposes. Or it's gonna want to go down King's Highway to that awful intersection at Third Street.
Yep.
I think we ought to think ahead. And do we want to let traffic funnel itself down to Third Street or across Coleman to Savannah? Or do we want to create a different traffic pattern? I think that's what Bonnie was not, she wasn't suggesting one, but she was suggesting we think about one. One way to do that would be to make Monroe one way, one way or the other. And so I, I think before we go, before we commit ourselves to something that, that that we'd have to redo or that we'd have to undo, I, I do think that Bonnie's got a good point.
So, I'm sorry. If you do one way, typically one way is come in pairs. So would you then make Madison and Monroe both one way, opposite directions?
I don't know if this would be typical, Anne Marie. If, if it was one way towards Freeman, you'd simply direct traffic up Kings to to turn on a, I'm sorry, up Freeman to turn on the Kings, the way a lot of it does already. But I'm not suggesting one. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am enough of one to see that Third Street and King's Highway and and Savannah is, is a dreadful intersection that we don't want to load any further.
Yeah. Where, where Monroe intersects King's Highway, the you need to look at what's going on with BB Avenue.
Yep.
BB Avenue is already one way.
Yep.
Okay, just so, and it's one way towards King's Highway.
Right.
So, Dewey Avenue used to be one way, the other way, and it was reverted back to two-way traffic maybe 12 years ago.
Oh, really? Monroe was one way?
Oh, no, no, Dewey Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Which is the next street over.
Right.
So I think if we did want to consider making Monroe one way, we probably need to initiate that discussion with Del Dot sooner rather than later because it does affect how the design of whatever they're doing coming across Monroe from White's Pond Meadow would function.
It also would affect the, the fire department and EMS.
I'm not trying to focus this on, on a, you know, a one-shot solution.
Right.
No, but, but I think that if we're gonna consider that, we need to, to bring Del Dot into the discussion because it affects it, it affects their network. And if, if the developer makes the changes to the Monroe-Freeman intersection and the, and they do all that signalization, and then we start a conversation about Monroe, I think that may change the signal design. It may change a lot of things because the assumptions and the engineering that they're using now is that you're having two-way traffic there. is that you're having two-way traffic there. Do you agree, Charlie?
Yeah, and the problem with that is, is that I know the developers, engineers probably 90% done that signalization design now.
Right. Well, the other thing is, I thought that what Bonnie and Rob were suggesting, and this is just for discussion purposes at this time, was the possibility of changing one-way, uh, streets between Savannah and King, not necessarily between King and Freeman. Did I mistake that, Rob and Bonnie?
I'm just suggesting we need a traffic study and traffic.
I agree.
Help us design this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think this, I think this may be a, a, a good opportunity to get back in touch with Matt Carter at, uh, what was got, and not T Squared, but.
T Squared Group, yep.
Yeah, uh, because he is an, he is traffic engineering. We're just a mighty crew.
And he'll provide his services without charge. So we can just reach out to Matt.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so I've got the total cost down here of 916,000. That includes all three roads that we've talked about. I think, just to put it in some, to some perspective for the, for council is that, you know, I don't, I'm not looking or I, I don't think we're talking about making decisions on which projects we're moving forward with next year or the following year. But I think at some time, especially as you start to move into your budget discussions, you're going to want to, you know, begin to, you know, really think about where this project and the ones I'm getting ready to show you from the maintenance schedule, you know, where they fall out in, in your thought process and your budget thinking. So just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Hey Charlie, I have one more question. I'm going to, last, indulge me, please. You know, when you turn on, you're on Kings and you turn left or you turn on to Adams, uh, there is a, what I consider a pretty big dip in the road there in the transition, right there at the intersection, as you're going on to Adams. Uh, will that be addressed in this reengineering or re, redo?
It's being addressed as part of our Phase 24 project.
Okay.
Yeah, when we're, when we're reworking that, those ADA ramps on either side of Adams Avenue at King's Highway and the crosswalk, we're making some improvements. I don't want to say that we're eliminating the entire dip, but we are making improvements to some issues that are on that crosswalk.
Okay, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Charlie, um, just a couple of questions on my side.
Yeah.
There's obviously economy of scale. I would imagine if we choose to do, say, all three corridor, you know, projects at once as a corridor, does that mean you have to complete, engage in those projects simultaneously to realize those savings? You, you understand what I'm getting at?
I, I definitely agree that there's probably a five to 10% economy of scale if you were to do all three projects, all three streets at the same time. And that's the only way that you would, um, receive that, you know, cost savings is if you did it all, did them all three together. If, if you split them out into different phases, you likely would not get that cost savings because, you know, generally you'd have remobilization by two or three different contractors or it may be the same contractor, but they'd have to mobilize two or three times. You know, that, that kind of thing, but. So I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Basically, you're saying in a million-dollar project, it might save us $50,000 or $100,000 to engage them all.
Yeah.
Go, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think so. Somewhere in that range, yeah.
Thank you.
So let's talk about, um, the work that we've been doing on our street inventory and maintenance schedule. I'll, I'll tell you that we're, we're 90% complete. We're not 100% complete. I've been back and forth with our subconsultant Innovative Management Services, um, several times, many times actually, over the last six or eight weeks, just tweaking their spreadsheets and tweaking, you know, all the field investigation work that they did. You know, they're, they're coming in from outside the city. They're not familiar with which streets the city operates and maintains. So with each iteration, you know, we gave them all that information, but with each iteration, we're honing in on, you know, exactly what the work will include and, um, finalize. Just want to make sure that when we finalize this, this first time around, it's exactly the way that we want it. And then the city and GMB can make revisions to it moving forward, but we'll know what they are. You'll understand what I'm talking about a little bit when I show you what, what we've been coming up with. But we are 90% done. There's some minor revisions that I know of just from looking at it over the last week that I need to, to make to it. Um, and, and then our final, um, our final review as well. So just to reiterate my point that I made when we were talking about the Monroe Railroad Corridor is that projects like that where we're talking about complete, um, renovations, uh, rehabilitations, they fall outside the maintenance schedule that I'm going to show you. So just keep that in mind. Um, and also remember that GMB did the GIS-based sidewalk inventory. And some of the costs I'm going to show you include, um, sidewalk and ramp cost considerations. But we want to make sure that we get our data into this street schedule. We haven't, we've got all the data separated, but we don't have it co-mingled yet. And we still need to do that. We're working on that. And then I think as we've had discussions on the Monroe Corridor is that we need to coordinate with the board, obviously, when we do street projects. A little bit of the, a problem or challenge that we have with that is that everybody who's, who's on council understands that, you know, it's sort of a, we go back and forth a little bit and then we decide what projects we want to do. It, it, it would be nice, as we were talking about earlier, to let the board know ahead of time. So I think one of the beauties of our street inventory and maintenance schedule work that we're doing is we're going to develop a five-year plan. And I know I need to go through council to get your approval on that. And it'll probably be tweaked even as we approach each and every year, just based on budget and other, other items that pop up. But I think if we can adopt the five-year maintenance plan and let the BPW know what that is, then they can obviously make their capital planning, um, for those projects as well. So keep that in mind.
That's a good idea, Charlie, and that's, really suggests that we adopt a five-year rolling capital budget since this is such a large portion of our capital.
Right. We've been working toward that. We just haven't gotten there yet. So I think this is a, a huge step in that direction. And so I definitely think that's, that's where we need to take this.
Yeah, just, just for people's background, uh, that, having a capital plan and an inventory was recommended by the finance committee and adopted by council. So it's, it's, it's in, my understanding from Anne Marie and, and Ellen Ray is it's, it's in process. It got a little bit, um, waylaid, as did everything by, um, coronavirus. But I believe they, they, and Anne Marie, you can certainly speak to this better than I can, but I believe that, you know, initial, inquiries and, and thought has gone into this, um, already. The, the inventory kind of has to precede the capital plan because we have to know what we got before we know what we got to fix. But having Allison as the facilities manager was a, was a big help in that regard, and I'm, I'm sure it's going to come together.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, certainly coronavirus, it has affected it somewhat, but, but we really needed to, to wait for this because, because as Mr. Morgan said, this is such a huge component of the capital budget that without having a real sense of where we are in terms of streets, it's hard to, um, it, it's hard to really say what our five-year plan would be. So I, I think, um, between, you know, kind of, and, and I think the part that the coronavirus has delayed is some of the getting Allison's feet under her on some of the facility stuff because she's been dealing with cleaning contracts and all this other stuff that, um, you know, we didn't fully expect to have to deal with in, in such intensity, um, when, when we started. But yeah, I think that definitely over the next year with this information, with Allison, you know, firmly in that position, I think that, that that needs to be a, a priority.
Thank you. And just to add a couple of points on to that part of the discussion is that we, we won't recommend that you do anything more than a five-year plan on your streets because if you start looking at six, eight, 10 years, it's, you, you're just kind of beating your head against the wall because you really don't know what the conditions are going to be when you get out that far. And the other thing is, is that we, we're going to have some tough decisions. You'll understand that when I show you some things here in a minute, but we're going to have tough, tough decisions on what five-year plan we adopt. Because, you know, probably most importantly, it's the budget considerations. Do we want to adopt a plan that puts, that estimates 150,000 or 135,000 per year for streets or something larger than that? And then also, as we all know, things crop up every single year that, um, become important streetwise that we need to address. So I mean, we've got some decisions that we're going to have to make. Today, I'm going to present some things to you that begin to put that decision-making process into focus a little bit for council. And, and get, get us all thinking about it so that when we have our discussions in the early part of 2021, you know, we'll be all a little better informed. So let, let me keep going.
You're recommending a, a rolling five-year plan. At, at what point would you do a reassessment to look five years ahead from that point? Would you do that every year, every three years?
Yeah, I would suggest that we do it, well, we're almost going to have to do it every year because I'm thinking that whatever the rolling five-year plan recommends for the first year in terms of a group of streets, we may or may not address every one of those streets. So if we do, then we can stick with the plan for year two. But if we don't, we're going to want to reassess every year.
Thanks.
Hopefully that makes sense, yeah.
You're going to want to, you're going to want to update it every year.
Yeah. Um, so this is a really important part of it. I think I showed this to you at the last meeting is that when we did our work and investigated the streets, we came up with a pavement condition rating. And we actually also divided all of the Lewis maintained streets into three different categories. One being local, one being local truck and one being beachside. Beachside is obvious what that is, all the streets on the beachside. You know, local, we're talking about, you know, BB Avenue or, or Manila Avenue or Dupont Avenue. Local truck, we're more talking about, you know, Fourth Street, Coleman Avenue, Second Street, Third Street, certain segments along those ways. So we divided those city-side streets into two different categories. Local and local truck, although I think I have Angler's Road also as local truck because of the heavy traffic it receives rather than just beachside. So anyway, then, one of the important things is our, in the city of Lewis, our existing average rate or pavement condition rating is around 69, which is good. Um, the, the streets that we're really concerned with are these 40 to 50 because those are still functional streets, but if they fall into the poor or very poor category, they become way more expensive to rehabilitate. So part of the algorithm that we use in our spreadsheet is to address a lot of these streets that are in these marginal categories, to bring them up into the very good or excellent categories and get them away from being streets that are going to fall into a bad category that'll be more expensive for the city in the long run. So please keep that in mind as we move forward. You'll, you'll see that a little bit in my discussion.
Charlie, you know which one, which street that is that's scoring a zero?
Uh.
Harborview.
No, but I can find that out. It's, it's in our, it's in our list of work. What, what street do you live on, Andrew?
It's, well, ours is good. You guys, Mcfee Street, you guys have been at it a couple of times, yeah.
You were practicing there, Andrew.
Yeah, I, I can find that. That's a good point. I should, I should know that. So this is where, you know, we, where I was talking about, that there's some tough decisions that we need to make, council, GMB, in terms of, you know, what are rolling five-year plans going to be? Because there's different ways you can do it. I, I, I think I talked to Anne Marie and we decided to put $250,000 per year. Maybe not Anne Marie. It's been a kind of a long time, but in for like a budget that the city might adopt. In years past, we've used 100,000. I mean, that was really a long time ago now. So even with inflation, that's probably 125 or 150,000 now. But we had decided to put 250 as just like a base Lewis budget per year. So we're going to, I'm going to show you what that looks like in terms of the streets that we want to do over five years. And it's this green line here. So the thing about every one of these different budgets that are on the right side of this box is that they keep your pavement condition index at some certain number. So your current pavement condition index is 68.9. So if you want to maintain that steady state pavement condition index on the average across the whole city, you know, you're looking at spending $260,000 a year. So, you know, I don't know if I want to go over every one of these. Um, another important term is backlog. And backlog of streets are all the ones that are below 40 on the pavement condition index. So all these. So right now, you only have a backlog of, um, where is it?
It's the green dotted line, it looks like, Charlie.
Yeah, yeah. So you have a backlog of, I think it's like 3% roughly. So some of these are going to actually, you know, budget's going to be a big thing because depending on what we select, some of those, those streets are going to fall in to that backlog of streets that are below, you know, a minimum value. Um, so just keep that in mind as well. But these are various budget scenarios that we can begin to look at to control the pavement condition index, to control the number of streets that fall into that backlog of bad streets. And that's why I'm just saying that there's a lot of things that we need to consider as we move forward towards adopting the five-year plan. You know, budget probably being the most important one, but we also want to make sure that our streets on the average are staying in good pavement condition rating. By the way, 65 is like the control that we like to use. We don't like to see the average across the city drop below 65. But also, you know, we want to try to probably minimize the number of streets that fall from the marginal category into the poor or very poor.
Charlie, is, is there any value, do you think, in us planning for, uh, areas that have signed pre-annexation agreements or that we see that would be annexed into the city as well, into this inventory?
Yes. And if Anne Marie and I get together and develop what that list of streets is, we may have already done some.
Okay.
Because when IMS came out.
I'm sorry.
Good, Anne Marie.
Well, you guys just, so typically when, when developments come in, it's because they want water and sewer. So for instance, Highland Acres, um, when the water and sewer, and Savannah Place, when the water and sewer was installed, they did a total redo of the streets. So when they come into the city, typically we're getting good streets.
Yeah, the, the, the pre-annexation agreement people would often put the streets up to city standard before we'd accept them. So that's, that's right, that, that cost is borne by the homeowners in the area or the developer. So that's right, that that cost is borne by the homeowners in the area or the developer.
I'm not sure that's quite accurate, Ted.
What are you thinking of?
Well, I'm thinking about the examples of the pre annexation agreements signed with Tower Hill. That pre annexation agreement, I I read it over and I didn't see any requirement that those streets had to be built to city standards. And I can, I know from having looked at the plans as submitted to this county when the county PMG was reviewing it, the width of those streets and and actually the construction is it is not the same as our city's standards. So and they they have a pre annexation agreement there. I do not also know about, for example, there's a pre annexation agreement at Harbor Point. And I don't know anything about how those streets were constructed, but they appear to me to be a little narrower than what the city requires.
All right.
So I I think you're right, Mr. Ritzert, that those pre annexation agreements do not indicate that the streets would need to to come up to standard. I I know that we have looked at and Charlie looked at it as well, what the county standard is compared to what the city standard is. And fortunately, the county standard, while it's not the same, the city uses the Delbat subdivision standard. It's not the same, but it's much better than it was, say, 10, 15, 20 years ago. So the the streets that, you know, were built. Well, if you take Savannah Place as an example, the those streets were in in very poor condition by the time we got the sewer in and the you know, the the standard to which they were built just didn't meet anything current. And I think the county standard has improved over time. So we don't see that the the large gap between what the city standard is and those newer county developments. Do you want to elaborate on that, Charlie?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I I wouldn't hesitate a minute to accept a county developed street in terms of the street section, the paving and the stone underneath. It would probably fall more into some of the items that Mr. Ritzert was talking about in terms of, you know, they probably have slightly different width standard and those kinds of things. But in terms of the structural integrity, I wouldn't hesitate if it's a new development anyway.
It might be something, it might be an area of the pre annexation agreement that we would want to examine and possibly tweak so that we make sure that our interests are being well protected going forward. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to show you how this works, and I know this slide is a little blurry. I might switch off to.
Can you see that one, Bonnie?
I need another cup of coffee.
Yeah, let me see if I can bring it up.
This looks like something Ellen Lorraine put together.
Good one.
Yeah, so bear with me for a minute. I can bring up a little bit clearer image of that, I think. Can you see that?
Can see it, but it has gotten any bigger. Actually, it got a little smaller.
I'll tell you that looking at this on a phone, it's it looks more like a music sheet than anything else.
Can you see it now?
It's gotten smaller, Charlie. You're making it smaller.
I don't think it's a presentation view.
Yes, I need to go the other direction.
Is that bigger?
No.
How about that?
Oh, man, I love it.
Looks a little like an EKG readout.
Exactly.
Yeah, I knew I knew this would be a problem, but may maybe I can just, maybe I can just try to walk you through it in terms of.
Can you zoom into one or two that you want to highlight?
I would, I would put it back in the the slideshow view though, because this it it is even smaller now.
Okay.
Let me get my binoculars.
Are you recommending we all go to see our ophthalmologist sometime?
I'm going to cover my.
Oh, they're killing me. You're killing me. Anyway.
It's got better. That's a lot, but it's still a little tight.
Well, the problem with this one, it's a little out of focus.
Yes.
Translating. This is.
We can't even see the big E on this.
What I was talking about. This is a five year rolling plan for a $135,000 per year rehabilitation, which maintains the average citywide pavement condition rating at 65, which is like the minimum we like to see it go to. We don't want to see the average drop below that. So if you begin to look at this, you know, over here, it says what streets are scheduled in what year. So if you look at this a little closer on your PDFs that I sent you, you know, there are several streets that are in year one, several in year two, year three, year four and year five.
Right.
So I know one of the questions probably be, well, which streets are showing up on the schedule? This is like the base streets that'll show up on on most every other schedule for an increased amount of, you know, per year budget dollar figure. So it's pretty interesting. When we plug in the $135,000 year plan with the understanding that we want to eliminate those streets that are in the marginal category so they don't fall or slip into the poor or very poor category that will cost the city more money over time. A lot of these streets are showing up on the beach side. So if you look at, you know, all the streets that don't have a rehabilitation technique shown, don't fall into the list for the first five years based on this $135,000 per year plan. So and all these streets are either micro surface and or mill and overlay. So and those are the kinds of maintenance techniques that we're going to see on this schedule. The problem, and one of the things I need to work out before I say this is done, is that these beachside streets, say California, Connecticut, Delaware, New York, the ones that all show up on this list in the first five years, the city may want to consider doing porous asphalt pavement rebuilds for each one of those. So that it not only repaves the street, but it improves the stormwater ma- ma- management of each one of those streets. And and most of these are those connecting streets between Cedar and Bay.
Right.
So right now, they're just showing up in the maintenance technique as micro surfacing. Because they're in marginal condition, but they only need to be considered, they only need to be updated via minimal technique of rehabilitation, which is micro surfacing. But again, we're going to want to look at whether we want to do those in porous or not.
Right.
So what I can do through our program is say such and such streets are also considered for porous. And it'll pop out a whole different program because obviously the cost would pop up for each one of those streets. And they would then maybe fall out of this list. But for right now, they're in there. I'm going to show you how this works in a minute. Hopefully that'll be large enough on the screen that you can see what I'm doing. But for a $135,000 per year rehabilitation plan, these are the streets that are popping out. A lot of them are on the beach side. A lot of them are city side local streets. The only one that was city side local slash truck was Fourth Street between Park Avenue and Market Street, which I think anyone would agree that needs to be addressed. Pretty, you know, at some time in the near future.
So I have a question, and this is mainly for council. If we were to, because I do think it makes a lot of sense to use the the porous pavement on the the beach side, because we are seeing more and more flooding and and, you know, there's a lot going on and there is no stormwater management system over there. If we were to do the porous pavement, given that BPW manages the stormwater utility, would it make sense to request that they participate in that? Because that way, I mean, it the the purpose of doing the porous is that it helps with the the stormwater management.
I think it's certainly reasonable to request that.
Yeah, by participate, I assume you mean help pay for.
Right.
Yeah.
But let's back, but let's back up on all these streets that are in the areas that Charlie's talking about. We know that they're going to be replacing the water main in those streets anyway. So why would we even consider doing anything to them until they've developed their plan as to how they're going to go about repairing those streets? So there's there's really little point in considering any of the streets over there until BPW develops their water main replacement plan.
I'd like to add a tag along comment or suggestion, and that would be that the council would create incentives for the homeowners on the beach side to instead of paving their driveways with impervious surfaces that they actually participate in this idea of stormwater management by using pervious materials for their driveways. Because right now, if we make the streets pervious, we are, you know, we are having to scale that job according to the amount of runoff that's coming off those those impervious driveways.
Well, so some of what the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee of the Planning Commission is looking at would actually require.
I understand.
So so whatever we do in that regard needs to be coordinated with that effort.
Exactly. This whole, this whole, anything over on the beach side involving those streets need to be coordinated with BPW.
Yeah, so one of the nice things about this or our spreadsheet and our tool that we have now is that we can go in there and put every one of these beachside streets as do not go right now. So they would be taken out of the analysis until we are ready to to address them.
Charlie, that's not a bad idea, but is there a possibility to add a column in here that needs to that needs BPW work for for any of these streets that are coming up? I mean, I mean, I think you can assume that all of those state named streets between Cedar and and Bay are going to have to be redone by BPW.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing. The other thing they were talking about. Go ahead, Charlie. I apologize. Go ahead.
You know, I plan on, I plan on doing that. In coordination with the boards, you know, capital, five year capital plan as well. So, yeah, that will be part of part of this discussion.
Well, that's going to change the way this thing looks dramatically. Once you do that, if we pull all those, as you mentioned a couple of times here, if we pull all those those streets, connecting streets out of this equation, it's going to change what this looks like.
Yeah, definitely. Tens of thousands of dollars are going to be pulled out and go to other streets. Other, other streets will pop up.
We need that to look at. I'm sorry, Tim. Go ahead.
No, the only, I think the light that just went off in my head was these rehabilitation plans are actually, these are in fact capital projects if we do a complete reconstruction. These are not the simple re milling jobs, correct, which are considered a maintenance item in the budget, correct?
Even the, even just.
I'm sorry?
Can I, can I answer that? The even a mill and overlay is is a capital project for us. So all of whatever these things, other than patching a pothole, all of these street projects are capital.
I, you're, okay, we can have a conversation about that offline. I'd like to better understand that. Because there should, it seems to me that we need to have a clear distinction between that which road that is reconstructed and one that is basically serviced or maintained. You know, a project that just maintains the existing surface.
Right, but a capital investment is largely based on the the cost of the project. And, you know, when we talk to our auditors about what what's the threshold for a capital expense, it's $10,000. So really, unless it's it's a a patch or minor maintenance, it's going to come under capital maintenance. It's still, yes, it's still maintenance, but it's a capital maintenance.
Yeah, wish it's not exactly, it doesn't exactly come this way, but you know, 135,000 over five years is going to be greater than 10,000 per year.
Right.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, this is the list of streets that fell out of our initial, our initial analysis for $135,000 per year plan that keeps the average at 65. Again, according to the discussion we just had, like the Monroe Avenue corridor, you're not going to see that show up in this spreadsheet because that's a different animal. You know, here's another one. It's 250,000. This is what we were talking about, the preliminary city budget. This keeps the condition index at 68.6, which is pretty close to what it is now. If you recall, I mentioned earlier that if you use 260,000 per year, it keeps this exactly where your pavement condition is on the average at 68.9. So the the important thing here is just to notice that obviously with $250,000 per year, your list of streets increases.
True.
You're, you're going to see in here some streets that I've crossed out, and that's that's because when our consultant IMS went through the city, they did some streets that aren't city maintained, which I thought I had gotten straight with them in terms of whether they would be in our analysis or not. But a couple fell through the cracks. So that's part of what I need to make sure gets revised as we finish this up.
Charlie, if you don't mind, the the even the PDF from the site, the city site is very blurry when I bring it up to like 150 or whatever to to see the print, it's it kind of blurs out. Is there another version you could potentially send us after the session that bigger? Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, the one I was trying to show you before was a little, was definitely clear, but it's it looks good on my screen, but apparently you guys can't see it very good on your screens.
No, and I printed it out in fine quality and it's still, I couldn't read it.
Yeah, no, I knew, I knew that, I knew that was going to happen. That's, so I want to show you. I want to show you this. Does that show up at all? Can you see that?
Maintenance Schedule Network, is that what you're?
That's all we're seeing right now is the maintenance.
I think you need to change which screen you're sharing.
Oh.
The screen you're showing is great.
Oh, I got you. Yeah. How about that?
That's much better.
Can you see that?
Not really.
Not, not on, not on my tiny screen. But it's, but it's, but it's very colorful.
So the answer is yes, Charlie, we can see it. No, Charlie, we can't read it.
Well.
Notwithstanding, notwithstanding Bonnie's iPhone, can everybody else at least halfway see it?
I can see it. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted, I just wanted to show you a little bit of how it works. If you go over here, and I know this is going to be hard for you to see, but it lists every street.
Right.
Over here. Okay, and this is, this is the spreadsheet that we're going to use as time goes by. This is sort of the the mothership of what we're doing. This is sort of the, the mothership of what we're doing and we want to, when we get this right in a month or so, we want it to be exactly right because we're going to want to use it going forward. This shows a budget of 328,000 dollars per year. I can stick any number we want in here. If, if we want to do 450,000 dollars, I can put that in there. And it changes the five year plan to 450,000 dollars per year. And then I hit this little tab here and it goes through its matriculation. And I'll show you what it comes up with in a second, which is going to look similar to the 135,000 and 251 that I just showed you. Still working through it a little bit.
Charlie, this isn't in the PowerPoint. So this is, you've got this in Excel?
Yeah.
Can you, this, yeah. Send to us as a closure?
Well.
Be helpful. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I can, I can give you that a little bit, but it, unless you're operating it, it's not going to give you, let's see, make sure.
Now you're back to almost illegible.
Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's a little bit better, but so this is a 450,000 dollar per year rehabilitation plan. So you know, this is how it can come up. You can see there's a lot more streets on the list of being addressed. But I'm just, I just wanted to show you that because I wanted you to know what you were paying for. That network analysis here is, is, it gives us the opportunity to put different budgets in and develop rehab plans by year, but also understand what it does to the pavement condition index and the backlog percentage that falls into streets that are poor, very poor. So let me move back to my PowerPoint. I thought this would be a little bit more of a wower, but.
It's very impressive, but.
Yeah. It's hard to see, I know.
But we can't read it.
I'm going to say I'm, I'm equally impressed with how much stuff Charlie has on his desktop. When he changed screens there. Ow.
Yeah. So anyway, what I just showed you was a similar plan for 450,000 dollar per year rehab. And just showed you how we would, would do that. That 450, where is that?
So red dotted line looks like.
Yeah, that's 420, but yeah, four, so you know, that would be one that would actually improve the pavement condition index and actually improve the backlog. So that, that would make the streets way better over the five years than where they are right now on the average. I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but I want to, just want to try to give you an idea of where we're going with this whole thing. So we've, we've looked at all these. And that's kind of everything I had on where we stand on the maintenance schedule. I need to make some tweaks to it. I need, need to make some revisions. I feel like in the first part of 2021, maybe after having some discussions with Anne Marie on, you know, some of the beachside streets and whether to include them or not, that I can show council going into the budget process, you know, recommended or several iterations of recommended maintenance schedules for your consideration going, going forward in 2021 through 2025.
Yeah. Great. Thanks.
And, and just one last, one last thing on this. You know, just keep in mind again that, you know, that Monroe Railroad corridor would be outside whatever rehabilitation plan we look at for the five year rolling. But it's an added complication to your, to the council's thought process.
So, so Charlie, the, like you said, the Monroe Railroad project that we talked about before would be outside of this.
Yes.
Where, where does Ocean View Boulevard fall? Because that was another one that was supposed to be.
That falls into your maintenance schedule spreadsheet because we're really not making, other than maybe localized curb repairs or localized sidewalk repairs that we identified in our GMB walkthrough, we're really not making wholesale changes to the curb and gutter and the sidewalks. So we're just addressing the street. And maybe that's another, a better way to put it is where we're just addressing the street, it falls into this maintenance schedule. But where we're rebuilding curb and gutter and regrading everything, putting in new sidewalk, it falls outside the bounds of the maintenance schedule work.
Okay. But it's so, but where, where does Ocean View fall in terms of the, the priority on the list? On how far down it is considering, because the people in Pilot Town Village, I think, have seen for a number of years that that was coming up. So if it falls way down on the list, then that creates a wrinkle.
Yeah. It's, certain segments of it are inside the 135,000 dollar per year rehabilitation plan, but not, not the entire length from Pilot Town Road to Canary Drive. But there are.
You mean the three segments are in the first years, 135?
Actually, it's selected year four, Rob. Good point. Yeah.
Right.
But it is in the initial five year plan.
Now, 135, again, it is a pretty low number in terms of investment. Two, 250 is even lower than what we've been spending. But if we add the rebuilds, it, it seems if we want to, if we want to do that Monroe project, you know, obviously that's way over these. So maybe you do for a period of, maybe for five years, you do 135 and break that into chunks. I don't know. It, it just something. Because that is a million dollars ish that's outside of, of this, whatever we would do a year to, to keep up on the maintenance side of things.
Well, it's really a little maintenance. It's just, there's one project that's very expensive.
Right.
Yeah, I think, and by the way, I, I, I gave you wrong information a second ago, Mr. Morgan. That, that Ocean View and Anne Marie, that Ocean View Boulevard actually is in the 250,000 dollar per year rehab plan. If we begin to look at taking some of those beachside streets out, it's all going to change a little bit. So maybe we wait till, till then to really look at what streets pop up after we put those on the no go list until the board does their thing. Yeah. And, and that, that's the complicating factor of that Monroe Railroad corridor is that it is, you know, it's a big dollar figure. So if you don't do anything that's on the maintenance schedule, then you're going to, then your street condition is going to deteriorate too. So you know, that's the juggling act, I think, that we need to, you know, begin to think about.
Right.
I'd be glad to take any more questions on this, or if anybody has questions, you know, just shoot me, shoot me questions and I'll do my best to answer them.
I think we may have more questions after we can see those, the, the spreadsheets a little more legibly.
Yeah. How about if I print out a bunch of those and get those to you guys?
That'd be great. Thanks, Charlie.
Okay.
Could you also, well, no, that Excel spreadsheet, you, you can't really print out. It's.
Well, it won't be workable for you.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
It is very impressive though. It, the, the way you can manipulate the different inputs.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's a nice tool. Like I said, I got a few tweaks I still need to make to it. We made a lot already, but we're almost there with it.
Okay. I think we could move on then, Charlie, unless there's any.
Okay. So I just have, I just, you know, wanted to bring you up to speed on a few other projects. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time, but we've kind of gone in a different direction with the M and T parking lot reconfiguration to optimize the cost because the costs weren't working for the three different entities involved, being the city, Hotel Rodney and M and T Bank. So what, what we've gotten into now is just a seal coating of the entire parking lot, the way it is right now, and restriping it to increase parking spaces by the number of six. If you recall, we had 10 or 11 extra spaces under the old plan, but that also included reworking this trash dumpster island, which raised the cost of the project. So we're leaving the trash dumpster island the way it is now and this island. We're allowing the trash trucks to come in from Third Street now so they can access and get out. So it's basically just a seal coating, restriping. We do have some of those flexible reflective bollards in certain locations throughout, just to kind of direct traffic away from in parking spaces. And we are putting back mostly existing, but a few new parking bumpers at each parking space. So this is just my estimate of where we're, we stand now, 27.5 to 42.5. We're still pursuing, I, I did talk to Anne Marie about maybe getting a change order price from the Phase 24 contractor. So I'll probably do that, but I, I really think since, Anne Marie, I haven't even told you this, but I think since it's just a seal coating and restriping, we can probably find a contractor that's does that more often, that's, but it's still professional enough to address a city type project.
Right. The, the thing is that if it's over 25,000, then we need to get a competitive bid.
Yeah. And this, yeah, that's why I kind of want to pursue like, I know Peninsula Paving didn't respond to our last request, but that was a whole repaving job. But somebody like that, that's got some professional acumen to them, but is more in line with this kind of seal coating and restriping.
Yeah. The agreement though with M and T at this point, it's still, there's nothing in writing yet, but is that they would share with the seal, they would pay the cost of seal coating and restriping a lot. Uh, that's where the agreement is right now. So that will bring the city's portion of this cost down considerably.
Yeah. Good point, Ted. Yep.
So if they pay, I mean, I think in your original estimate, that was something like 15,000 dollars that they were going to have to pay. And so that, that could impact the city's contribution towards achieving this a lot.
Good point. Yeah. So I think I, I need to just coordinate with you, Mayor and Anne Marie on our path forward in terms of procuring prices. And then, you know, we can, I know there's other balls that are being juggled regarding this project, but we can begin to hone in on maybe getting everything worked out.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions on this one?
Mm-hmm. Nope. Thank you.
So that, uh, Mayor, we, we, we'd be able to parse out then if we're going to assume that M and T is going to take on a certain component? Will we be able to break out then what the city's cost would be in that scenario?
I think we, we have to get a cost on the seal coating and the striping and that would be a separate cost. And then we'd have to figure out what the costs are in addition to that. Yeah. Charlie can do that.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, yeah, Ted, you're right. It was the seal coating and restriping was M and T. The reconfiguration of the dumpster island and the dumpster relocation was on Hotel Rodney. And then the city had some minor, like this island and some minor other, you know, the bollards and so forth were part of their responsibility.
Correct.
So, yeah. So, yeah, I'll definitely work that out when we get those numbers.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we are moving forward with the tennis, pickleball, basketball court improvements. I want to say we're 80% done the design and contract documents. Our goal, we did meet with Parks and Recreation and we finalized the layout of the pickleball courts in coordination with the tennis courts and exactly what the scope of work would be. We're still looking at a total project, 160,000 cost estimate. I know the city's got some grant money in place, almost half of that. But we do, my goal is to get this out for bid so that I can make a recommendation of award to a contractor at the council's February 2021 meeting so that the work can begin in March and be, the courts can be ready by June for the summer season. So more, more on that as, as we finalize everything and get it out to bid. So the last two are architectural.
Charlie, can I ask, what, can I ask one question about that?
Yeah.
Are the pickleball and tennis players in the loop on, on how things are going? Just so that they're informed?
Yeah. I, I mean, so I think Barry and Rodney are, are kind of taking care of that. The, the pickleball Subcommittee is actually going to be meeting on Monday. Or Friday. You're right. I'm sorry. Friday to start conversation about how the, how the long-term pickleball needs can be met. So I think that they can be updated as part of that process.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
So Anne Marie, I don't know if you want to promote Morgan to a panelist. Cause the next two projects are.
I just did.
Architectural. Okay. Morgan, you there?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Oh, let me turn my stuff. Is that better?
You're getting better.
Little bit more.
Hey, guys.
That's better.
Hey. So GMB, I, I can let Morgan talk to a lot of the specifics of it, but GMB's met with the city, the police department several times over the last couple of months, both on the architectural work required and also the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC work that's required. You know, when we, when we made those site visits, it was discovered that there's this smell that pops up from time to time, gets up into the main floor of the police department. Sometimes I think even into the second floor. So we're actually investigating that work under separate contract with this company called Sussex Environmental Consultants. So GMB's coordinating that work with the city, Sussex Environmental, and our final design. So.
Yeah. And they, Sussex Environmental was in yesterday.
Oh, okay. Good. Yeah. I was wondering about what, what their schedule was. Okay, good. So we'll be getting feedback from them on that part of it. You know, there is going to be HVAC C work probably because of the 20-year-old system that's there that should be updated. So our basis of design right now is to replace the HVAC equipment, utilize the existing ductwork to extend feasible. Because of the new architectural floor plan, we'll probably have revisions to this internal sewer and water piping systems and plumbing fixtures will be replaced. Similarly, the lighting design and fixtures, electrical power design and fire alarm device plans will be revised based on the new architectural floor plan. And our MEP, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Consultant, Diamond State Engineering, who's worked, working under contract with GMB, would coordinate on all the telecom requirements with the city and the police department. Morgan, do you want to speak to the architectural piece of it?
Sure. Previously, we did a couple walkthroughs with the police and with Diamond State. Previously, we did a couple walkthroughs with the police and with Diamond State, and it was evident that our initial thoughts on, you know, which was more of a finished renovation, was more needing a bit of a schematic master plan of what those changes needed to be on both levels, even architecturally. So some things increased with the thought process there with the police on how to use that old gym in the basement, potentially blowing out the locker rooms and making them larger and more efficient for use, which I think you guys have seen those, what condition they're in, as well as the first floor expansion potentially adding another office in the admin area so that they can increase their patrol room. So some of those things created, you know, more of a, you know, solution for a long-term solution, if you will, rather than a piecemeal finished renovation. So that's what this proposal really talks about, which I'm assuming it includes all of the design from schematic to design development through construction documentation. However, I think the most important piece of that proposal is that schematic design portion so that you guys can decide what your master planning effort would be for the police department long-term as a whole, to decide if you wanted to take on those renovations in phases, per se. The first floor or the basement first, you know, those kind of conversations, and then divvy up that MEP work accordingly as well. So I think that, you know, this looks at it from a whole instead of by pieces, if that makes sense. So it gives you the opportunity to pause in certain, after certain pieces of the work are performed so that you guys can decide how you want to proceed.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that is that GMB's submitted a proposal for the design effort, the schematic, the planning, schematic and final design, 45,805, and that is for the entire facility. And it would coordinate whatever phasing of the project the city decides upon moving forward, thinking that we can construct, you know, however we decide to do the phasing, I guess I'm thinking that it would be basement first or first floor first kind of ideas. So I think the city needs, will need to decide whether to move forward with the project in terms of its design. And then eventually, as Morgan was mentioning, as we get into the schematic phase, we can talk about exactly what the scope of work is and how we want to phase it during construction.
I think you, obviously, you're moving ahead with the idea of doing all this. I think there was discussion at some point about the idea that the kitchen that serves the, or the break room that serves the city and the BPW is literally across the hall from the existing one that the police use. Is there any, is there a need to duplicate that whole facility in the police space? You know, the chief's on, and he might want to comment.
Yeah, so the chief's on, but the other question I had and that kind of goes into your question, Mayor, as well, is can we start, can we get an estimate for the schematic so that we can make those decisions so that everybody's kind of on the same page of what the overall look of the police station would be in terms of layout? And then, once that's determined, engage in the more detailed architectural work?
Yeah, the proposal that we sent does break that out, Anne Marie. So for instance, if you only wanted to approve just that schematic design portion, that would give you the opportunity to do that pause is what we were suggesting. So that's not that total of that 45,000, but I can bring that up if you want to.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it, and I didn't see, and maybe I'm just missing it, I didn't see where, because it says architectural design, MEP design. So is the architectural design that 21, is that the schematic?
Let me pull up my version, because that's how we price it, is by those stages.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't see it broken out by the stages.
Morgan, what are you looking up? What's in our folder?
Yes, is that? Yeah. So what I have for the latest, for Anne Marie, it does show, it does not break it down, so I can do that further. But typically, Anne Marie, it's about, you know, if you break that down, you know, pretty evenly between the three, the schematic design, the design development and the construction documentation, it's about a third each.
Okay.
Of the total cost. So if you take that 45,805 and do that, but I will definitely follow up and get you that. I'm sorry that I didn't break it out further.
No, that's fine. And, you know, I was, I was looking at it yesterday and I had that thought, and at that point I knew we'd be talking today. Because I do think that we do have some kind of fundamental questions that need to be answered, like what the mayor said and how we deal with the weight room and, you know, like one of the things in your proposal is that you would go to, like, Troop 7 and to Rehoboth to look at their stations. So there could be ideas. So I guess my thought is that we, or at least I would be more comfortable going to the schematic so that we then have a better sense of what the clear architectural numbers are based on that. Because depends on how many walls you're moving, depends on how, you know, if you do have a kitchen, those all affect kind of the more detailed and architectural things.
Using your concept margin, we're looking at about 15,000 for the concept drawings.
I'm a little bit on what's going into the concept drawing. I'm not even sure we've made those decisions, because I remember there was some discussion about the kitchen, there was discussion about the unshared workstations. So what are we asking Morgan to schematically design?
Yeah, can I, can I just chime in? Rob just made the point that I wanted to make, which is, I'm not sure we know yet in collaboration with the chief, what are the must haves, what are the nice to haves? You know, should we be looking at gym memberships instead of recreating a gym? I mean, I think there's a bunch of questions here about where we're going with this that we need to address before we do design, or go further with designing, I guess I should say.
This is Charlie. I kind of think that would be the purpose of the schematic work, is to.
Okay.
Do all that work and identify everything.
Right, but we need to hear from the chief and the police department about what that schematic is supposed to reflect.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure we're there yet.
So we've actually identified quite a bit of that information that was sent back to Anne Marie and to Allison via those separate site visits that we've made. So we did that, you know, in advance of putting this together. But I believe what you're really talking about, Bonnie, is a programming effort, which may have a bigger implication for the entire, you know, facility, right? So for overall long-term planning, which, you know, I think is actually a good, you know, tool to have. Essentially, what that includes is a spreadsheet of spaces and what the needs are, not only from a current need, but a potential long-term need, maybe 10 years out, maybe 20 years out, and what that facility, what that would do to the facility or the change of the facility so that everyone can either weigh in as a yes or a no. But we do have a clear delineation from the chief from those previous walkthroughs, which, you know, maybe has not been shared with everybody yet.
So Morgan, what you're suggesting is a programming effort that would precede the schematic design.
Yeah, that there's more information to be gathered than we've already gathered and more people need to comment on that. I think that's a wise tool to use.
I think you're, I think you're right, because I think it does come down to kind of what we've scoped to date versus what council, as the, you know, the funding entity and the managing entity determines are the priorities.
You're right. Let me take a step back, maybe I missed this, but there was, there were some areas that we were essentially saying were unsafe conditions for the department. Are we going to address those in a short term?
Yeah, that's the methane gas issue. So I did get a message from the chief that when Sussex Environmental came yesterday, the odor was not present, so they weren't able to do anything. So now we need to reach out to them when the odor is active so that they can determine what's going on when it's active.
Makes sense.
So, so yes, we are progressing with that regardless of any overall. I mean, I think the issue of it just being kind of dingy and the locker rooms, you know, should be nicer, those things, I don't see as safety issues, so they could probably wait. I think that those things can wait until the larger scope is determined. But again, I do think that those kind of dingy type issues need to be addressed, but what we don't want to do is go in and, you know, make changes and then find out later we're going to move walls and those changes get undone. So I think.
Isn't the exact answer to Andrew's question with the previous slide we're going ahead with?
The previous slide?
Which was mechanical.
Well, not, not the HVAC. The only thing at this point that we're moving forward with at this point is the methane gas. And we also are, we've engaged an electrician to have a, to install a box to power the sump pumps separately so that you're not overloading one box, which has been the constant problem. So those issues are being done. The other, like HVAC and stuff and new piping systems and plumbing fixes aren't, aren't part of what we've authorized yet.
I guess that's because they need to wait on the architectural layout.
That, and also, as it relates to the methane gas issue, until they're able to determine the cause, we don't have a fix. So we don't know what they're going to propose.
Thanks.
Anne Marie, is there also not a problem in that lower level, the basement of that building with the sewage outflow, you know, that, well, I don't know what the solution is, but Charlie, maybe you can speak to that. I did a two, go ahead.
That's what Anne Marie was talking about, that there's two different sump pump stations down in the basement, and there were problems electrically with, they were kicking out each other. So that's part of the work that's being done right now.
Right, you're going to be separating two different circuits to support the two different pumps.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think to answer Andrew's question, we're addressing the immediate problem issues that have been causing problems, and then all the other work kind of falls into this programming schematic phase that we've been talking about.
Right. Okay. If the, I'm going to do a little bit of micromanaging here, excuse me. If the subcontractor, I think it was called Sussex Environmental, yeah, Sussex Environmental Consultants, did they, when they were, they visited the station yesterday, they did not install a monitoring station to actually capture data, you know, over a 24, 48-hour period, 72-hour period? If this methane gas issue is an occasional release, it seems to me that that kind of technology would be very helpful.
I will call them again, from what I understand, how that, they do that is they use some form of infrared testing to see where the gas exits. So the way I understand it is if it's not present, then they can't figure out where, if it is exiting, where it's stopping. So the point of trying to get that done first is to see where the other MEP engineer can pick it up and finalize it and fix it with the new design once that proceeds or prior to that, if it's depending on what's found out. So I'll follow up with that to see if they can install some monitoring equipment, but that proposal was relatively inexpensive, shall I say, so I'm not sure it did include that, but I'll see if they have that capability.
Thank you.
Just to answer that further, Tim, they came with a handheld unit. Obviously, the issue wasn't present yesterday. So we set up, I got the lady's name and number to call them immediately the next time it rears its head for them to come right down the street, apparently. They said they would do that.
Thank you. Yeah. And do I understand correctly that that methane gas has been present even on the upper floors of the building? Is that correct?
Yeah, definitely first floor on a every time it happens basis, and then occasionally it's as bad as the second floor.
Yeah, I'm reminded of that visit that I paid with you recently to the station where there is actually a return vent in that, in that mechanical room. And that would be a logical place for it to pick up the methane and distribute it throughout the building.
Yeah, I think we determined that was a supply, but it's certainly backflow through there when it's not being supplied.
Right, yep. Okay. Thank you.
Maybe to wrap up the discussion on the police department is that Morgan and I will revise that proposal for you, Anne Marie, and get it over to you, so for your consideration. Okay. Mayor, is it okay to move on?
Please. Yeah, please do, Charlie. We're good.
Okay, so the last project is the Rollins Room Restrooms, just to give you an update. We are 60% done with the design. So this will be a project that will be bringing to council and then also putting out for bids for a contractor to install. I don't know that we need to go through the whole thing again, everybody's aware of what's going on. We're going to add on to the outside of the Rollins Room, creating two ADA compliant restrooms and a custodial closet. All three of those rooms will be accessed through a corridor that also allows entry from the Stango Park side of the facility, the new structure. So it's allowing people that are inside the Rollins Room to use a restroom facility that's connected to that room, but also people who are outside enjoying the park for whatever reason to do that as well. So, you know, the big thing about this is everybody probably remembers is that we're going to be able to get water and sewer from Adams Avenue rather than going through the internals of the museum, which is going to reduce cost and disturbance inside the building. So we're working on it. Pretty soon we'll be wrapping it up and going over this with Anne Marie and getting it out to bid. We'll finalize our cost estimate of construction once we move forward a little bit more on the design.
Charlie, what is the timeframe, if we go forward with, the timeframe for the improvements?
Like a construction period?
Yeah, when will it be done?
Oh, oh, what are we thinking, Morgan, in terms of finalizing our designs and being ready to put it out for bids? January?
Yeah, I would think that you wouldn't start construction until spring, given the work you have to do with the utilities to connect.
And that's what, a four-month project?
I would say with closeout, I'd add another month to that, but yes, that's my guess, too.
Thank you.
Looking that it might be ready for midsummer use.
Sounds like it, Mayor. Yeah.
Okay, so we should expect to see this proposal come.
Okay, so we should expect to see this uh, proposal coming to us in, at the January council meeting?
No, 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 we won't be ready for, by then.
Okay.
We'll probably have the plans ready by then, we might have the recommendation February or March at the latest.
All right. Okay. Okay, any questions or comments?
That's everything I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Charlie. It's been a long, a long discussion, but I think it's helpful bringing everybody uh, up to date here, so.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, uh, are there any other questions or comments for Charlie? Okay, thank you very much, Charlie and Morgan. So now, uh, we have, we have a motion to possibly go into executive session. Is, uh, Anne Marie, do we have things we need to discuss in executive session this morning?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, so then I think we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Okay, thank you, Rob, for a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Bonnie. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, thank you all for your time this morning, and I think it was a beneficial discussion. Uh, obviously, there's still a lot more to learn, but these things are coming together so that Anne Marie can begin to incorporate a lot of them into the budget, the draft budget that we'll be seeing at the end of January, so.
Thank you, Charlie.
So we have a second, uh, all in favor of adjournment?
Why?
Bye.
Right, thank you, have a good afternoon, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.